I believe to divide the United States of America into the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
What do we need to do? We'll tell them what's going on. This is a live meeting. If you can't say anything during the meeting, I'm going to talk to the person next to you. You're going to be on YouTube. No cross-talk. If you want to talk about your work, let us speak. But try to keep the talking down because it screws the whole thing up. My name is... Open the meeting of the Advance Town Board, meeting of the council. Meetin' records, conduct the business on behalf of citizens of Advance, Indiana, to hear from the various departments that properly attracted their public that's invited to attend as an observer council proceeding. Now occasion allow input for take part in seven. We the town drop the rules of law. No one shall speak unless recognized by the council president. Once recognized, the speaker shall stand, state your names, state your purpose. Addressing the council speakers from main on the subject. Discussion shall not increase any new matter. For further discussion, no perjury or forgery be allowed while the council is in session. Those who are allowed to speak from the government are permitted to speak three minutes the first time, two minutes the second time, and one last time to the matter of current session. Council has statute that has final authority on matters in this to this session and to conduct meetings such a way as deemed necessary to maintain order in proceedings. Residents would like to discuss a new concern or request, this card must be completed, return the courtiers office no letter of the Wednesday card to the council meeting. Forms received from the deadline act that was placed next month's agenda. Council shall make and take original steps to maintain order in the meeting, including removal of any person who is willing to break the meeting. What that means is you get three minutes and you gotta like, I'll tell you. Sit down, be quiet, sit down, be quiet, sit down, be quiet, and you gotta get out. Okay? So if you're gonna start right, just go ahead. Do that, sorry. Okay, there are first, Tina Minn.
I'm seeing her.
Get over there. Public open bids or circle, circle, please, draw a few bids.
No bids?
No bids.
Was it when we advertised, do we have a paper or what? Tell me this. So what's our next step? You advertised it, received no bids?
Yeah.
I think we can go and negotiate over it with the market.
Okay, yeah. We can sell at a negotiated price, right? Gary Le, engineering report, council to consider, ADA updates.
Um, Gary said that he is meeting with Midwest Paving tomorrow and will have an update. Um, there are, I'm going to have to have Gary draw a proposal because now our ADA plan and Title VI, all of that has to be updated annually. So we just will have to go in there and give the update.
Okay.
Okay, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Jim and I, twenty twenty-five.
Sure. Confirm the CI?
Uh, oh. Make a motion.
Wait, wait, wait. Let me get, wait, let me get signatures, please.
Okay, done it.
Make a motion to approve the planning of July fourteen forty-four.
Second.
Confirm the CI?
Uh, opposed.
Plans for the month of, uh, July were ninety-five thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Men.
Plans, uh, fund balance was two million, five hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents, and the reconciled balance was the same.
Yes, Ms. Cordean.
Um, any questions about fund or appropriation reports? And I will be giving, uh, Park and Brad an updated appropriation report. Adjustments for July, there were three. Uh, pirate contract, uh, warrant charge removed. Um, one account was charged twice an year and the removal of a late fee added in here. So total adjustments for July are negative three hundred ten thousand, uh, three hundred ten dollars and eighteen cents.
Make a motion to approve the three hundred and ten cents, eighteen dollars for adjustments.
So, confirm the CI?
I.
Are you stating your.
Your line.
Okay. So, Jim, I don't know if you got something. And then this is what it's called here. Um, there's no, the changes to tracks. Um, the last thing to discuss is, um, August eleventh, it needs to be changed because my conference is usually now and it got moved, but it's now in August. You know, when I look to the date, that's our meeting date. So, yeah, I'm going to be gone Thursday. So, needing to know what, what day we, like Tuesday the nineteenth, when I have the eighteenth of our meeting.
Yeah, you're on the nineteenth.
Because that day, that day works. After that, I'm on the morning. Right there.
She's on her way. We're talking about Tina Henderson, who is a grant administrator. Look at grants for the sewer plant and also the master plant. For the future, we can write these grants, but we can't write them all at the same time. That's the best thing to do tomorrow. She's going to advise us on that. The board makes a decision on the priorities of what we need to do. She talked to me about it. She talks so much, I couldn't understand everything she was saying. That's right before the board, I think they could say. Anybody approve the nineteenth?
Make a motion for that? And we're just, if that's okay, I'll just make a motion for the meeting minutes. Is the nineteenth okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next, the park.
Oh, okay. Um, the next meeting for the park, uh, board is next Tuesday, July the twenty-second at six thirty. We'll get what's sharing before and, uh, learn how to do everything. Um, I talked to you right before the meeting about getting together, um, to get some guidance on grants. Um, we received a call today from the Boone County Health Department. Um, their freezer arrives on Thursday. So we may be able to get the freezer for the park as early as Friday or Saturday. Probably Saturday because we have to empty the trailer and, uh, drum up some folks to carry it. It's got wheels, but, uh, it's got me looking into a trailer.
Part of our is, uh, some refrigerated trucks back at Red Hill. I don't know how big it is or whether they can, they're pretty big trucks.
Okay, um, and then the next thing is, uh, we're discussing a vendor event with food trucks, uh, for the community day, and we started the planning on that. Um, the next move in the park will be on, in August. And, uh, um, we've had two shelter rentals this summer, um, that we received income on. Uh, and, uh, they actually picked up their trash and, um, it looked good after it was over. So, um, it's nice. And that's pretty much all I have for the park.
What are you running in the shelter on? What's Gary's?
Uh, seventy-five dollars and they get twenty-five dollars back. It's a deposit or it's fifty dollars basically, but they get twenty-five back, uh, get the spaces clean and everything.
And I heard that you were looking into the cost of paving the trail.
Yeah, I haven't heard back from you yet. I called Triangle House.
Well, when you get ready to do that, talk to us and tell us you're gonna do it. I don't think they care. They might care that.
We have talked about it on the park board meeting.
Yes, but.
But, okay.
Tell the board that you're gonna do this once they're qualified.
Okay, that's no problem.
Yep. The thing is, oh, we're responsible for anything that happens at that park. We just need to know what's going on.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, and I, Greg, I need you to come fill out paperwork sometime this week, whenever it's good for you. And does everybody know, Greg's?
Greg, you're the park board member. Who you? I think when I was out there signing those papers, I think we talked about Triangle coming out, so. But I'd like the board, I'd like the whole board to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah.
I told you, I told you.
My neighbor lives last night, cleaned up all the limbs, the big ones, and piled them on the.
Five hundred.
Are you gonna spread the trail or anything? Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do that hopefully this week, Monday.
Spread the trail?
Yeah.
Sounds good. The, uh, I passed out those flyers for the flag, and the flag code. Martin Luther King, he's gonna buy the first five hundred dollars for a flag.
Thank you, Dale.
So we can get some donations or get the other, probably about ten more.
Yeah, 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 that's totally possible. Don't you guys know how many flag you got?
Nope, but I'm kind of gonna get, get answered.
I think it's like thirty, thirty-one.
No.
There's some that are down, that damaged, they're, but we'll count. How much you have right there?
Well, Matt Johnson.
Close your mind, I'm gonna read it. I'm gonna read it. I can't even read it the other day.
And Matt Johnson doesn't know it all, doesn't make that far unless a hundred dollars towards the tier.
Okay, utility contractor, you guys doing the park for me?
Yes, sir.
Utility, uh, contractor report, very hungry, do you make?
For July, both water and wastewater plants are running as they should with no violations to report. Eva Car has had their matter technician out and they determined that it needs a re-control board. One is ordered and is waiting to be shipped. I'm still waiting on quotes to repair the wells and pumps. I've reached out to peerless a few times to continue to water seal the quotes. The hydrogen main stream has been repaired and is back in service. The lights at the water treatment plant have been upgraded to the LED lighting. Um, for May, because we didn't have those numbers, uh, pump gallons was one million, two hundred eighty thousand. Bill was six hundred forty-two thousand for a difference of forty-six point nine percent. And in June, um, one point, uh, one million, two hundred fifty-six thousand bill was seven hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred for a difference of forty-two point seven percent. And Troy, and we had talked, Jim and I had talked about this, that he's wondering because it's only in the summer months that we have these huge differences, if it might be something at Collins or Eastern.
I talked to you, uh, Brian, guy today, he said, uh, he could give the numbers on what he said. About two weeks if he does, uh, pump the water through the hydrator. Then he said maybe fifteen loads, four thousand ounce load, so maybe within the last twenty days, maybe sixty thousand.
Do they have a contract?
And they do a hydrator, they paint, I think, one, two years.
Yeah, well, where does that want to go? I don't know. I used to know a lot of my ass.
It goes by.
Well, I figured.
And? And, just so you know, we're live streaming, so we're going to say it's coming on YouTube.
Okay.
Uh, just go to hot.
Uh, this is located, pump, uh, three on high street, two on cherry, two on walnut. Fix the water leak at four oh seven East Wall Street. Heard commuter did, one fifteen South Main. They said it's been busted for a long time, but it didn't get busted until after they put all the, uh, new gravel on there. So, whatever. And, uh, no way we.
That's it. Remember, timber report, Jerry.
Please, uh, for, uh, for June, six service requests were completed, no holes were installed, and one in words of the state outage.
We're having more of these reports. Let's jump back to Tina Leather, first story.
Again, thanks for, uh, working into your job, man, and, uh.
You were personally did it, just.
I see that, I, you know, I, construction, either way, I made it, let's just say that. Like on vacation month, so it's always crazy trying to get there, right? All right, actually, if you will just. The council is down. We're actually late on. I have to sit down. All right, well, I'm Tina Henderson for some of the council that may not know me. Um, I'm a grant administrator. I've been in the industry for a little while, uh, twenty-seven years. And, uh, I write grants for CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. I also work with EPA, uh, which is the Indiana State Revolving Loan Fund. So this year, the town of Advance submitted an application for your wastewater treatment plant expansion project, uh, to the Indiana Finance Authority. You're ranked somewhere around seventy-five. Um, and I talked to Camille Myers, who's the project engineer for the Indiana Finance Authority. And she said that, uh, in the OCR, there's been some rule changes. If you're going to seek SRF funding, then you, you submit your application like the town did. Then you go into only round two if you're seeking SRF funding. And so one of the options that I'd like to talk to you about tonight is maybe going, seeing what your priority is as a town, but since you have submitted your application to SRF, you can now apply to round two, CDBG. And with that, that proposal was due October. And then you have, um, the final application is December nineteenth. The total amount for your wastewater treatment plant at this time is one million, ninety thousand, nine eighty. We'd be looking at a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar CDBG grant and a three hundred and forty thousand dollar, um, nine hundred and eighty dollar loan from SRF. Now, if we submit the application and we're funded, then we'll either be slated for their traditional SRF loan or we would be placed in what is called their pool funding, um, which is very similar. It's still the twenty-year loan. It's still a really low interest rate. It's just only the loan and really there's not going to be a lot of opportunity for grant funding for Advance from SRF just based on your median household income. You're not considered in SRF, um, which EPA looks at different guidelines. They look at, uh, median household income. When you talk about the CDBG grant, which is HUD, they actually look at the income survey that we completed last year for your community and it's valid for four years. So you have one income survey that states you have low to moderate, fifty-one percent of your citizens are of low to moderate income levels. Then when you go to apply for EPA, they strictly look at your median household income. That's, and unfortunately, to get IFAs grant money. And that is not going to be an eligible, um, criteria for you to see from SRF, any sort of grant. So you're going to be looking at loan, which is still a low interest rate, federal loan. So that's option one. And then the town has looked at, okay, option two. What's option two look like? A comprehensive master plan. Does the town have an existing comprehensive master plan, strategic plan?
No.
No, that was on my list to discuss with you.
Awesome, cheers. Um, so I, the comprehensive master plan is basically a strategic plan. So if your community does not have a comprehensive master plan, through HUD, the CDBG program, Community Development Block Grant, you'll be competitive. Um, basically what I like to consider a comprehensive, uh, master plan is a roadmap for the council. It will lay out projects for the next ten years. It will identify, it'll look at your water, wastewater, stormwater. It'll look at zoning. It will look at, you know, um, housing inside. So I'm working with one community now. There's not a lot of growth opportunity to expand outside of the town limits like there is here, but they're really wanting to focus on that infield. So what are sections of the town that may have abandoned homes? Um, owner occupied rehabilitation might be identified for one area. So it really is a comprehensive strategic plan for your community to move forward in the next ten years. And it's, um, what's nice about it is it's great that the council wants to do this, but it really takes the entire town to put input into the plan. And so you'll have a series, it's almost, I think it's eight months in total, um, to really start having those community planning meetings. And what I did is I slated you for a quarter four planning grant. If that's where the, the priority is for the council, I, so I kind of want to talk about that timeline. You would submit, first of all, we'd have to move first with, it sounds backwards, go right into a request for qualifications for a planning firm. And then we submit our application, which is due November fourteenth. What I like about this quarter, um, quarter four planning is that you'll receive your funding sometime, it's award announcement in January or February. By February or March, you'll enter a contract with that planning firm. So we go through the planning process, but you actually do not go under contract with that firm until you get the grant award. So I would say by March, you're going to be hot and heavy into that planning, which is going to be in Indiana, a really better, try to get that public input into that plan. What are the visions from the community? What are the visions from the board? Um, and so quarter four, I really think that's that spring into summer planning. And that's about an eight to twelve month process if we started today and you would have a comprehensive master plan. That's saying you're funded the first time in. Um, last round, they only funded two comprehensive master plans. It is very competitive. Uh, I'm, I'm waiting to hear back. Um, you and another community that I'm working with, you're located in what I consider a doughnut county. And so you score low based, based on being in Boone County. There's nothing you can do about that, but that places you about fifty or sixty behind, points behind every other applicant. So then, um, now they're going to put in what's called resilience points. And because I work with other doughnut counties, um, you're going to probably even be further, a little further behind in CDBG. But I'm waiting for that, they're supposed to be, we're waiting on how those resilient points work. One, it could really benefit you. Saying you are resilient, you can take care of yourself, you have growth opportunities, you're planning for the future. Um, you're located in Boone County, you have all of these positive things. And so if you score lower, maybe that's a positive thing. But with CDBG, because they focus on low income residents, I'm thinking if you score low, kind of like your distress points by being located in Boone County, that might be a double whammy. But I'll keep you posted on that. But I just wanted to let you know it's going to be harder and harder for these doughnut counties around Indianapolis um, to receive CDBG funding because you're going to be roughly about a hundred and twenty points behind. If I'm thinking how these resilience points are going to work.
Is that because of the growth of the company or what, what would this?
You know, I'm not sure how they come up with the community distress. The community, the county distress points in every county, so I also work in southern Indiana. So you have a southern Indiana county that doesn't have all this growth potential. Um, they've scored, you know, they, they could have up to a hundred and twenty points, saying that their distress is pretty high versus a Hamilton County, a Boone County, where they're down around fifty, sixty points. You know, that's what you'll receive for distress points. Then when they look at resilience, they haven't laid that out formally, but that's really just, you're, you're being able to take care of yourself. You don't need a lot of federal assistance. Um, and when I find out in some of these doughnut counties, there's a fine line. There's, there's really cities and towns that are really flourishing and then there's really communities that you just haven't got there yet. Doesn't mean it's going to happen for you and like Advance is knocking on your doorsteps. It's coming. And so it's really hard for you to strategize. Um, you're not, you're not those distress points. You have a harder time putting funding packages together for those projects, is what I want to try to say. So option one was a wastewater treatment plant expansion. Option two is a comprehensive master plan. I gave you the timeline, but it may take one or two times to go in. Um, you might not be funded for those reasons I just mentioned right on the first time. So we might have to hit a second round or third round. So that can put your planning into August, seeking that comprehensive master plan. Um, community center, uh, there's been some talk here on the community about needing a community center and what that might look like. Um, you, you have a couple of options. I'm not sure where you're at with the community planning, but you can do what's called a feasibility study. What does the vision of this community facility look like? And then you could go through a planning grant again through OCR. That'll be twenty thousand dollars with a five thousand dollar local match. Uh, again, we could still hit quarter four with that community center. And the application fee is fifteen hundred. You'll see all my application fees are fifteen hundred dollars. It's a one-time fee. So you have to go in one or two times, three times. You only get one application from me because I don't start over after each application. Once they have the application submitted, it's only adding those five or ten things that they say will make it more competitive. So I, we don't have to start over.
So the twenty thousand dollar financial package agreement is just a planning, right?
Yeah, it's just planned, but if you look at option four, you could actually, I'm not sure what, what it would cost, but we could start some outreach right now to an architectural firm and you could get launched right away with doing, I'm not, you can figure out what the cost will be. And all you need, I worked with a library last round and you just need about a schematic design of the community center and you need, um, what that's going to cost, a budget. And so you could hire, I think that was around fifteen thousand dollars-ish. Um, but we'd have to get quotes. We could just request quotes. So requesting qualifications for your comprehensive master plan will follow federal steps. If you decided to pay out a local fund, then you don't have to follow those federal guidelines in procurement. And you'll just move forward with, I can send a email, uh, with a request for quotes and we could get started on that fairly quickly.
You said, uh, one time you said the actual money that would be possible to grant would be like five hundred thousand dollars or?
Uh, this round it's seven hundred fifty and I haven't heard any difference for round three and round four. So if you are thinking about a community center, in the past, like when we built this fire station, it was only five hundred thousand. So for the last, starting, I think, quarter three of last year, so it's been a year, they bumped it up to seven, it was really the last time I was here, so that was about a year ago. Um, if you, literally that afternoon when I, before our meeting here, we all received notice that they bumped it up from five hundred thousand to seven hundred fifty. And so that's, that goes a long way with the community center. It really does. Um, and so I think what I want to do is just have some open discussion on really what your priorities. There's no right or wrong answer. I just want to kind of, I'm not sure which direction you'd like to send me in and what direction the town would like to go in.
I feel we need to enter the comprehensive plan to start with and, and see what we're going to do, have to do in the future. We have to increase our water system, increase our electric system, increase our grade. You know, what do you guys do to increase the infrastructure for next ten years? That would be mine.
Are we more likely to get in, like, if we apply for a grant and they see wastewater is more of a need, are you more likely to get a grant for that compared to like a community center? I mean, does that mean?
So those same distress points and now resilience points are going to affect your, your construction applications as well. So if you go in. So if you go in round two, you're going to still have those same county distress points and resilience, so it may take me one or two times. The only thing with construction is let's say we're not funded in round two, you're going to have to wait again a full year before you reapply.
For the same grant or for a different one?
For the construction grant, for the wastewater. Because the town is planning to utilize SRF and this just changed as well within the last couple of weeks. They are saying anyone who's going after SRF funding, which the funding package for your town is SRF and CDVG at this point in time, well, we could switch directly to just go after straight SRF, which they also have traditional loan and they have pool funding.
The thing is, if we have to borrow the money from SRF, that means we're going to raise the rates to pay that back.
If you decided to go with option one, my first step is to bring in a rate consultant to really look at your existing rates, to see how much of a rate impact, what would it be if you took on the full project? What kind of rate increase are you looking at? And what would your rates look like if you tried to go after a CDVG grant? Or if, you know, so you would just weigh those two rate options out. But you would, let's say you start this fall with a CDVG application for your wastewater. Let's go there. Construction would not start until the spring or summer of 2026. If you wait, when you say, hey Tina, we want to go after planning and we want to hit round two of 2026, because that's what would happen. If you select option, let's say number two, then that's going to place your wastewater project hitting a round two 2020 city. You would not see construction on a wastewater treatment application or project until 2027.
The thing is also if we tend to, we decide with wastewater treatment plan, the actual SRF funding, we could fund that with another source saving tip money or something like that, we wouldn't hit a borrowing rate. And want to keep us from raising rates.
If you see something of that potential down the road, you may want to push, if you're not being forced by pre-order to do this plan expansion, you're not under any timeframe and you see the benefits of pulling off for a new potential of tip, then, you know, that would be a reason why you wouldn't go forward with option one right now because there's better financial opportunities potentially in a year.
The thing is, right now, we don't have to grow critical needs for it. There's a need, but it's like future, someone wants to build several houses here, we would probably need that.
Right.
And if they did that, then we can put in for tip funding, which would be on the other part of it. And they should have said for, if we have three years residential,
Now it's two.
Two years of residential tip. And but if we have a large corporation come in here, we take that for tip and up them, have those papers served, if needed.
Right.
That's the thing is, right now, I don't really see a need to raise a rate unless we just have.
Or do the plan expansion unless IDEN comes in and forces, unless there's some sort of order that's forcing you to move forward at this time.
How long has IDEN given you before they upgrade into this?
Oh, there's been legislation passed. Oh, yeah, what's?
Kind of a restructure route, what I hear is seen from what I need to tell my trainees. So, yeah. So we could just come in and say, have upgraded your wastewater, but what's on, right, we would have to get that done or would it?
I met last week with IDEN on another community that's in enforcement. And here is, as long as you're in communication, so if there was ever an enforcement, what would happen? I'm not saying there will be, but if there is an enforcement, typically, the first thing you do is get with your engineer. You create a timeline of a plan and then you and IDEN both agree on that timeline. And that timeline could be a year and a half, it could be two years, depending on what needs to happen. So when it's first cited, then you will have some planning, just like we're doing right now, saying, what's your, what's your plan? We're looking at the next three years. They will sit down and kind of have this same conversation. What's your plan? What's your next three years look like? Well, do we need a preliminary engineering report? Where did you score on your last SRF? You know, you can already show that you have made efforts and so that's going to be positive because you submitted in 2025 an SRF application. So it's not like you haven't been trying to seek funding options and grant money to get that plan.
You're not, you're not under a warning IDEN to, you're submitting with a wastewater treatment at this point in time, but it's getting close.
Right. We were under an early warning game and we've already addressed that we are taking steps to move forward to rent the project. That's how they're aware. And submitting an SRF application is a step in 2025 that you've completed. So I can't really pinpoint like, oh, you'll have it here or have it.
As long as you're in communication.
As long as you're in communication and you're continually letting them, like I know I was glad for this one community, say, hey Tina, can you put a letter together for them and just let them know what their plan is and what's going on. So that would be how they approach that. I mean, IDEN is not, I mean, they're here to enforce, but they're also here to make sure that you can make financially feasible decisions. So they're going to work with you until you find the best financial option. I have a meeting later on this month with another community under pre-order where the funding agency wants to have a meeting with IDEN, a funding agency to kind of go over what they're all seeing for this one community. So there's just a lot of planning once that happens. So you'll have some time, is what I'm saying.
Another question, maybe. So you, I feel like you kind of missed an opportunity with the construction or the community plan or whoever that one to come in? Because we didn't have enough water later idea?
We had water, we didn't have that first time.
Oh, okay. So you're saying, no, if a big company comes in later, they can maybe help fund some of that?
Right. They really have enough electricity, but we're working on upgrading the electric system so that the next time you can then have electricity. But at the same time, I'm a big advocate for whatever we do, we make sure we don't raise any rates anymore. We have to live. Because I got payment, you got payment, I want payment. So everything we do, we need to figure out a way to do it as cheap as possible.
I do see other communities inside the doughnut counties that are, let's say they're not, they're smaller in nature, but broke is on their doorstep, moving towards this comprehensive master plan. So I really do see that being a priority too. With your waste, I'm not saying your wastewater is not a priority. It's just we're trying to find the best financial option to move forward. And, you know, I think that's something to consider.
I agree. I think I was going to recommend that to the council. I reached out to Andrea Kern, who was our new EDC director, who was with OKRA previously.
Right, I remember.
Yes, and they actually left as a, left in another county, they are actually working on their comprehensive plan with HWC right now. So I reached out to her to see, you know, what kind of even partnerships or what we can do with the county if they're working on that as well. But I, we definitely, with the lead district and all the growth that's happening on the county, I'm really, we need to get a comprehensive plan.
And so with that being said, I do see us trying to go after a comprehensive master plan and then what will happen, let's say you're not funded that first time in, like I talked about, because it's so competitive. And those resilience points, we've got to figure out a way to overcome those resilience points. At that point in time, we'll sit down with a firm and say, okay, we did not receive CDVG funding. What would it cost for us to move forward? And they might give you two or three options for you to move forward without a CDVG grant because it's worth going after one time, maybe two. But again, I don't want to delay any sort of planning because I see the importance. And so unfortunately, I may have to recommend, based on what I'm seeing on the scores, if you're not funded, what's in this direction? Or you could say as a council, let's get those options in front of us now so that if you go after, I'm just going to give you the timeline so you know what it looks like. It takes a long time to go after CDVG. So we'll go through the pyramid, we'll submit our planning grant in November. You could potentially get started by February, March with your planning. But if we do not hit that first round, and so that plan would be completed by the end of 2026. Let's say we have to go into quarter one of 2026. If you, if you wait that long, then you're still at optimal planning time with residents because you're in the summer months into the fall. But again, it'll probably be 2027, early 2027, when the plan is actually complete.
So what's your counsel? If we tell you, you can take a look at it and see the possibilities for us to get a comprehensive plan, easily or a grant or your own?
Right, I think it'll be competitive because you'll say the magic words, we do not have a plan, versus you're trying to update a plan. So I think, I just want to just give you that caveat. So when we get to the end, if we hear that you need to reapply, I'm going to sit back down with the council and the town chairing and say, how fast do we want to move this? And maybe you'll want, because there's not such, you're still in great planning months. But unfortunately, last month I had to say to a community, you're going to be planning right in the middle of winter and you really want to take that time to get public input, you know, during the festivals, whenever you have a lot of activity in town. People are more apt to get out. There will be online surveys too for people to fill out. It's just, I always see it go a little better when the weather's a little nicer. And you really want that public input into a plan.
So we're going to be paying $6,000 for them to kind of just tell us that we need to do the wastewater for the community center, is that what you mean?
No, it's not that.
Oh, it's comprehensive, everything.
It looks at everything.
It looks at your utilities, it looks at your planning and zoning, it looks at, it will set out a five-year capital, up to 10-year capital improvement plan. So as board members, you're only on the board for four years. Let's say a whole new board happens. They will have this comprehensive master plan as a guide mark to say, okay, these are our priorities. Or this planning group will come in and say, this is how Lebanon's growth and development is going to affect your town. Here's where housing additions are probably going to happen. So with that being said, it is, I like to call it a bible. I know we're being recorded, but it is a, it will have everything about your town. Roads, drainage, electrical, water, wastewater, zoning, growth development, infill. It'll look at parks, it will look at improving your parks. What needs to be improved in your parks? It will look at your fire.
I don't see a split place and fire as well.
Close and fire as well. You know, with this growth and development, you'll have, you know, talks, meetings about growth and development. And, you know, they'll be able to assess how that's going to impact the town. Then there's going to be a section of your downtown. What would you like to see in your downtown? And everybody in the whole community gets to actually place input into that plan on how they'd like to see in their downtown and whether they'd like to see improvements in their park. You will receive a survey. So this planning grant requires a community input into a survey that says, what does the town feel about the comprehensive master plan? Is it needed? And so I'll launch probably about a two-page community survey that asks about parks, your downtown. Do you see, do you have available housing? If someone wanted to come in and rent the house, is there rental units in your home? If someone wanted to come in and buy a home? Do you have available stock for someone who's looking to purchase a house on market here? And just kind, it covers a lot.
Now, is the comprehensive plan having one help us to apply for future sewer grants? Really doing that, seeing that we have that? I didn't know if that would be in the law or not.
I mean, I've received grants for advance for the fire department and then we've also done water, wastewater grants before. So I would say that it doesn't hurt, it definitely helps. Now, there are other grants, you go after community foundation grants or other state grants that actually have the question, you have a comprehensive master plan. So there are other grants. I also see the Community Development Block Grant requiring that. But I do think with where you're situated at and what I'm seeing in other doughnut communities, that is going to be a document that each one of your council members are going to want to see. How do the residents feel about this growth and development? How does, how do the residents feel about our downtown? How do the residents feel about our park? Do we need a community center? What are the needs there? And it will list the top needs from the residents, it will list growth, development. And then that planning firm will come in with everybody's input. I don't know how they do it, but they create a 10-year capital improvement plan for the community to follow. So then about 10 to 15 years later, you'll want to update that plan because you'll hopefully have accomplished some of those milestones.
I know Jim doesn't, might probably be on the council forever to see.
No, I understand, it's okay.
To be on the council for that long, you know, because there are going to be transitions probably in the future, you know. So we want to make sure that vision is carried through.
Absolutely.
My feelings are, we should go with the comprehensive plan, monitor the wastewater treatment because we really don't need it today, but we may need it tomorrow. And then see what happens after that. If we have Tina, start with looking at the comprehensive plan advice on what we can do with that, whether we want to fund it or stop it, whether we want to go to a grant and what it's going to cost. I mean, when you say it's going to cost $56,000, that's going to be spread out of, hold for the general fund, the water, the sewer and the electric systems, it's going to be spread across all that. So it's not just coming out of one place. And the real deal is with this comprehensive plan, we have an idea of where we're going to go and what we need to spend money. Do we need to buy, swing for the park? Or do we need to shut the park down and sell it or a slave center or something?
If we don't get funded for this, how long do we have to wait to apply for another?
For the comprehensive master plan, the next app, so this is the last quarter. The next, it will be right after the new year, it will be quarter one. So then I've got to ask, we've identified number one. And I haven't put a timeline together, but that will be my next meeting that we start pulling together the request for qualifications for that firm and I'll present it. I'm not sure what your next, what's the date of your next meeting?
August 19th. It got moved because I will be at my own MCT conference.
So I'm going to write down August 19th at 7:00 p.m. What I'd like to do is, I didn't know what your priority was and so I didn't bring a timeline. So what I'd like to do on your August 19th meeting is to bring my contract for the $1,500 and go ahead and present to the council a timeline of how we're going to meet this November 14th deadline. And then I want to ask, while I'm reaching out and developing these requests for qualifications, how do you feel about a community center? Do you want me to reach out to, let's say, a few architect firms? KRM is a good architect firm. HWC, I think, has some architecture in there too.
Let's say with that right now, let's, let's kind of put that on the parking lot for the meantime because what could be more critical is the comprehensive plan, the wastewater treatment plan. If those things are not needed, then we should go with the community.
Okay. Because we could go after the comp plan. If you started feasibility study simultaneously, that would open up round one CDVG construction because you could have two grants going on at one time. So you would have your comprehensive plan going. And then you, if you started your planning for a community center, board said, hey, we know we need this and we're going to do this, you could start the planning of that schematic design and go through where's the location, what's it going to look like and do that. But that would be two federal projects going on at one time and I don't know what your schedule is going to be.
I would do it.
You can do, I know you can. But I just wanted to at least give you that.
I feel a little, but I'll give it.
Yeah, I would at least want to let you know you can do both of this.
Wait, applying for a community center financial package and then a planning package, would that cover the architectural work too?
So if you do, if you apply for, you want to do a CDVG, so you want to go first comprehensive, we're going to meet quarter four. If you, then you're looking at option three, going after a planning grant?
Well, if we hit the planning grant, would that include the architectural costs? Well, if we get the planning grant, would that put the architectural approach?
Oh, yes. That $20,000. So for a community center, for comprehensive master plan, you're able to get $50,000. For a community center, just feasibility study, it'd be $20,000 and you would put $5,000. So you would save about 15, give or take, $1,000 if you went after, let's say, if you were funded in by quarter one, we would slate this community center feasibility study because you have to be under contract with that. As soon as you sign contracts with the planning firm, you'll be able to submit probably quarter three.
Then if we do these two right away, and we need something popped up from wastewater treatment plant, how soon would we have to wait before we do?
We would just hold off. The reason why I'm asking about community center is because I have to do a community survey. When we go after planning grants with OCRH and money, there's always a community survey to gather. EPA is more technical engineering. So when you go after SRF and ICA, engineering, engineering, IM, that's your best friend. You're meeting possible income, one public hearing. But when you go after OCRH, it's all about social media posts, trying to figure out what the residents want to say about the project, community service. And so what I'm thinking, if I launch a comprehensive master plan, I can put a few questions in there about a community center, if you see that coming up within the next year.
So when you do the planning for a community center, how long do you have before you'd actually have to start with the center?
Once you receive, when you receive a planning grant, you're not forced into construction. So it would be when you receive, you know, we might want to do some crowdfunding for that. So again, there would be a lot of public input into that community center. You probably have two or three options presented to you at the end of that plan on which option you'd want to choose, different financial packages for the community center. Then they would identify funding, which is always beneficial going through a feasibility study, crowdfunding, and, you know, what kind of fundraisers can you do, community foundations. It would identify your stakeholders into a community center. And so I really do support if you're going after a community center, truly gauge that public input into that center. Do they want a full-service kitchen? So if you do a lot of Girl Scout groups, or have, you know, if you have any Girl Scout groups here, or different groups that might want to bake muffins and have a bake sale, they could utilize the kitchen there. If you have any training, I know you guys have this wonderful facility here for training for fire departments, but are there other training or education classes that you would want to run there? Besides just having it for fangwoods and weddings and reunions and those are, and, you know, OCRH really ties those community centers to social wealthening of the community, keeping you all together and having that socialization. So we could definitely, this is what I would say. I would, at this point in time, if the council wants, we'll, again, priority number one, comp plan, let's get that going in by November. But when I'm launching a community survey, just only on the survey, I'll just put a few questions in about a community center so that we're not having to go back and redo that community survey again, and your community's hit one year after another, community survey. And then, again, that comprehensive master plan's going to have a lot of input. And then as soon as we're funded, or the town has a clear direction on how they're going to finance this comprehensive master plan, we would move forward with the community center. I'm assuming quarter three and potentially quarter two to go after a planning feasibility study for your community center. And at any point in time there, your wastewater switches and becomes your priority, we can drop the community center and move forward with your wastewater. Does that sound like a plan? But I, what I'm hoping, because you can't apply until December, right? December will always be the final application because your package for your wastewater treatment plans, SRF. If all the stars align and the world's perfect, right, you would move forward with your comprehensive master plan, have that funded, move forward with your community, your feasibility study. By the end of 2026, you're closing out your comprehensive master plan, and then you would be able to turn around and submit by the end of December 2026, your wastewater treatment plan. So I'm putting that timeline out in the universe because that's perfect. But if all the stars align, that happens that way. But you could potentially, if not, you would be able to hit quarter one of 2027 with your wastewater treatment plan.
I like that direction.
Anybody have any questions about what we're talking about? Firstly, I'd like to have the board vote to say, both sides are negative on option two. An emotion to approve option two?
And move forward with seeing as our brand administration.
We can do that.
Oh, that's an idea. I'll make a motion to move forward with option two.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll say aye. I made, I'm pretty keen to be our brand administrator. Again, motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Tina, after you do the split of this, with the paperwork you're going to send in, you know, we wait before we look at the community center to see what we want to do. If we make a hit right away.
Absolutely. You might have walked out when I was saying that, but I, what I would like to do is first focus on, you have to, you can only submit one application at a time. Focus on your comprehensive master plan, get it funded. I'm hoping you're funded the first time in. And then as soon as you're funded with that comprehensive master plan, or have found a financial pathway that you want to take for that comprehensive master plan, I'm thinking quarter three, we would look at the community center. But let's say somewhere between January of 2026 and June of 2026, your wastewater becomes the priority for the town, which can happen. We can drop the community center, move forward. And I did go through a perfect timeline. Did you agree?
Yes.
Yeah. So there's a perfect timeline in a perfect world where you're going to be able to accomplish all three of these, within the next two years.
Consensus, does everybody agree with what she's saying that we do the master plan and wait till we're going to do it on the community center or do we need to waste water? Anybody got any votes with that? Consensus, yes.
And then you would like for me to go ahead and ask those questions in a community survey, just thoughts and insights on a community center and need? And that might even help you make your priority as you launch into that comp plan.
I think we need to take our time and try to do one thing at a time and make sure what we're doing is the right thing because we can make mistakes and cost the rate here to head and spend money, which should have done.
Great. I'll take close call for motion for, for Tina. Sam, I made a motion. I may have a second.
I'll say aye. All votes?
All right, well, thank you, thank you, Diana. Thank you. I know I was late, so I should actually be the last one to leave, but I actually need to head out, but I will see you on August 19th. All right? Looking forward to getting this in motion.
Okay. Next up, the hipper's committee, the commissioners report. I want to say, state of Indiana is doing their normal thing of playing game with utilities. The one thing they are doing is they're backing off on the, going down the coal-fired plants because we have state electricity, coal-fired plants, until they find another source. Water and wind are a great idea, but when they blow them, suddenly they channeled them times, we have to have some kind of state power source. Well, ICA are going to shut down a coal-fired plant in Southern Indiana, which is Point Water Valley, I think it is, they're shutting down. They shut that one down, they're going to need something to replace it. And then meantime, they're, it'll be shut down around 20, 30, 31, 32. We got, naturally, we got a part to replace it, and they've been coming online about 20, 30. So that's about it. In other words, ICA is doing everything they can to keep the rates down, and they're doing a pretty good job so far. Sometimes I think these guys work magic with money to keep the rates down. And as we can see on the last, right, the, no, the tracking, the last tracking factor, they went down on the tracking factor for last two or three quarters. So if we have a little bit of raise, electric could balance that would be tracking factor because it would bounce enough. So there was no actual change in the rates for utilities, which is a very deal. That's about it. Local issues that we're going to talk about?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
One tower blower problem?
So the quote, they were there replacing the lights. They found the blower was not working in that used to be a place. Jim already told them a resolution, 2016-01, to move forward, so we just need to ratify.
What that is, is something in an area where the coring tanks are, it's a, to me, it's a safety issue. It's like coring tanks leak, they can put that on and get the coring out of the building there, an area, even a minor leak.
Do we need to make a motion to pay this?
Yeah, make a motion.
I made a motion to pay a special electric, 68592, to fix a fan in the home room.
I'll say aye.
And for Jim to sign it.
Aye.
And for them to use it. Yes. Just it.
Okay, moving on to the next thing.
Choice and.
I'm glad it's going. Did you contract with it?
No, because this is for the lead service line.
Oh, right.
I should have it. I know I'm. It was for 48, 48. So as a quote, because they have to hydro back 22 locations and look at the connections on either side, this is for the, directed by the, and verified, so that's as a quote to do that work.
That's what we have to do, and they're not going to, I think they're not going to give us any money back from it. So we're going to start this $4,800 bill to check the link to lead service lines when we probably have any adders. I get a motion to approve that.
And can you just sign it?
What funds that come out of?
That will come out of the water.
Close to water.
Make a motion to approve that and for me to sign it?
I'll make a motion to approve the 48, can you just sign it?
Give a second.
Yes, just.
You second it? I'll say aye. Okay, fire department?
Six EMS runs, five canceled in your house, three fires, four fire alarms, fire line is down at one, and three more big flashes.
Question about the fire? Moving to police. Brad, when you talk about your report, trying not to make it very detailed, just keep it generic.
Okay.
Because we're lying.
They had 12 runs in June, five or six offender checks, three dog runs, complained with construction worker driving in somebody's yard, phone call from an insurance adjuster wanting to talk to about an accident, kids were paintballing, parked at 2:00 a.m. and suspected drunk driver. Mileage on the police vehicles are, the 2024 is 23,000, 26,378 miles. The 18, the truck is 166,821 miles. And the new Tahoe is 124,576. That's the current mileage on the vehicles. The Tahoe is decaf and the lights are all on it, everything's taken care of there. Dan drove it in the parade. The $1,000 you guys gave me last month, I used it to buy some lights, some kind of some cool lights. It plugs into the computer port in the vehicles, and it turns all the headlights, the headlights, even the license plate lights, turns them into white wings. So it added a bunch of light to the vehicles. I thought that money would be well spent there because it's, all the officers, everybody likes to have lots of lights on their car. So it was a morale booster for the reserves that work all the time. And for free, they don't pay pay, they're volunteers, they risk their lives out here. Dan drove it in the parade. Our police vehicles are advertisement for the town. And they looked nice and the lights worked well and everything was like, we got a rack together, that's a, that leaves a big impression. Dan drove the Tahoe in the parade because I wanted to grab that because everybody else is probably seeing the trucks. So we got that all done. Solar panels in for the, he came in Friday for the speed limit sign. I talked to John. John came in Saturday and tried to hook it up, but they couldn't find it out. And they delivered it, they delivered it late Friday, probably got left in the office without the neighbors. John's going to come in and get that going. We'll have, I think we've laid the radar sign out. Other day, otherwise it runs for about three days, and we've got to bring it back in and charge the battery. It looks pretty heavy and the tire keeps well flying. We got our computer, $150 computer delivered. So Sean passes bike class, he's been making a few bicycle trails. I told him the priority right now, there's not bicycle trails over, is the red radar on Main Street. National Light Out, we're going to do that August 5th. It's a national crime watch meeting. It's kind of a block party thing. Everybody in the whole United States has parties that night, all the crime watch groups. We're going to do it out of the bureau. John Bowles is going to donate hot dogs, hamburgers, chips and stuff. And we're going to have a party. I got Ben Edwards from South Main Street, he's my DJ, so we're having music. What I want to do is take about an hour and talk about, have a group there, we'll talk about when you can use deadly force, and if you ever had to use deadly force, I don't lose gun carriers in here, but if you ever had to, what to expect, how to protect your home against burglaries, what to expect, or something like that. Just, travel to Indianapolis very much, chance to be involved in a crash, I remember a lot of your last recent years, so it'll be a good night, we'll talk a lot of things.
Remember, Ray, we talked about teaching people how to use dark vehicles.
Yeah.
Chair and I are going to help a few of our, maybe doing a face painting or something for the kids.
We'd love to. The biggest challenge I think I have right now, I've got everything under control, is step four, get the word out. So I want to start at 6:00. Now, the big challenge for kids is it's the night before the first day at school. So that might be a problem for a lot of families. But we can't change the date because it's a national, it's a light day. And we're going to have people bring their own lawn chairs, and we're just going to sit out and chill, grab a partner out under the bureau, have a good time.
Kids going to bring the dog?
Bring the dog? How do the dog feed kids? I'm not sure. We're trying to rethink what we're going to do with the dog now. I'll see what happens. Maybe one of his kids. And I was waiting to see how the dog would get around kids before using too much at school. Last time I did, my kid's school.
Brad, if you can, is there someone like, that's good with the computer or anything? Sounds really good, to make a flyer that we could put around town? And then we could put it on the Chatters and all that, and do a reach for her, and get the word out on that?
Yeah, I got all my guys coming, and I've talked with them, start putting it on their Facebook pages on Chatters. I took a picture of the, of the murals, so we can start putting it on the Chatters and announce it. We're about three weeks out, tomorrow night will be three weeks. So it's Tuesday night, so it's time to start giving the people their first notice. I think we'll have a fight. Anybody that wants to help or volunteer, be involved in parks, if you guys want to do anything. So August 5th, Tuesday night. Do you want to see if you can put a fire truck?
It's pretty expensive, obviously, it's a long way to the marathon.
We're going to have plenty to do, if anyone wants to.
Just bring it from here.
Just bring it from here, you know.
And, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm pretty excited about it. Uh, I was interviewing relations for nine years and I probably did, I don't know, three thousand, four thousand crack last year. So I have a nice little skill to do. We can talk about what you, what you need to think about today's world, police wise, etc. And then, uh, code enforcement, Jim, it's on here again, sort of have updates.
Yeah, like Brent, you inspected the four oh seven, and you said they're okay in the front yard, but they need to do some work in the back yard. Is that true?
It needs more work. It's, it's, we've made the progress, but we still got to base the other.
Okay. Uh, through a one, that was turned over to APC and it's crewed by APC. And APC lady said that, that the junkyard has been taking care of, but litter and trash in the yard, that's a, uh, so he's got litter and trash in the yard or health issues, uh, that, uh, department report to thank.
He could fix the trash. Paint it, paint it. That would be. And then the animal control, Jim?
Yeah. Uh, I talked to King Campbell about that and, right. Sorry, wrong chair. Tony Harris, I talked to Tony Harris, who took care of the jail, and Tony talked about. Uh, Boot Kenny is the only sheriff's department in the state of Indiana that has a shelter. There are very few sheriff's departments having animal controls. Most of this stuff is done by, uh, Humane Society. Uh, the Boot Kenny Humane Society, uh, not very, they, it's no kill shelter. They foster kit, animals out. They don't have room for anybody. They're always in trouble. So it gives the, puts a lot of stress on animal controls. Where are they going to put the animals if, if it's a problem? They don't have a place to put them. Um, my two is about that. Uh, the animal control would be at, uh, local police to write the tickets and the, uh, basically, the shelter should be, uh, should be a Boot Kenny shelter that they can have them come and pick the animals up. In other words, if there's a problem with the animals, marshals or sheriff, but police didn't have them handle the animals, that the Humane Society would come and pick them up. But that's not what we got in Boot Kenny. It probably needs to change. I mean, like I said, they're putting a lot of stress on that animal control. She's got a lot of area to cover and she did it best, again. Quote, quote unquote, from Tony. When I talked to him about it, he said about the fact that they're the only sheriff's department in county where it's a shelter. And I think he'd like to get rid of the whole thing and let, get them back on, uh, and Humane Society to take care of the animals and, or pick up the animals and let the local police write the tickets on their bank. He said West Town, uh, Don and West Town London need to step up and help them come over. Didn't say anything about it, but, but, they were, that's why we had to worry about animal control. So that would be too bad.
This was Mike Gilson's pet project and, uh, Mike's the owner, is a, is a pet lover. I think he was listening to her. And, uh, I, I don't think they knew how much they were biting off. But it, well, so Hannah, just the guy, I, I told everybody she's going to be the busiest cop in Boot County as you were.
She's, uh, camera troubles still is.
Uh, one thing, though, Natalie Bieber from the, uh, from, uh, the Humane Society called me. They're starting to do the track, what do you call it? P R, P T Rs.
P R, I've got tires. My, who are dates?
So they're getting ready to start doing the track. What they're doing is they're tracking the cats and then they're fixing them and then they're releasing them. So if your cat disappears, yeah, it'll be back in a couple of days.
Pissed and shot, son.
Julie, a whole animal control will be Bob Gilson's house again, and, uh, Robert's leaving the back door open, letting the dog come out in the pan. Uh, he's, he, he has food in there, I guess. But the problem is the stray cats are jumping in the house and going inside and coming in and out of the house. So she said what he's doing with the dog is okay, but stray cats running in and out of the house, that's a different problem. I think most of the tracking, two and a half, behind his, our stray cat, because there's, there's a bunch of stray cats in Bob Gilson's house.
Martin, I did hear that the dog is supposed to be out of there at the end of the night. I don't know if that's true.
She, I don't know if she's running above, but she told me I could get rid of it by the end of the night. I don't think she has any authority to write it. Uh, so we'll see. We'll play that to the backup.
Any more questions on animal control? Uh, next thing is Comcast pole attachment update. Please report the payment tonight. There is a, uh, documentation that, uh, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen pages of legal lease that, I mean, these pole attachments, and we're going to charge Comcast thirteen dollars in the twenty-five, sixteen, uh, purple, attached to their product to the poles going all the way through Advan, to Dover and probably in the side strip, which could generate some pretty good money for, not a lot, but pretty good money for the electric department. Uh, but there's a lot of legal lease that has to be settled, and Amy and, uh, Peter Peterman from EMA are doing negotiations with Comcast to make sure what we get is what we need. That their Comcast would be like, like to give us a hard time and, uh, make things in their favor, not in our favor. And we want to be either neutral or in our favor. That's what Amy's going to try to do. Ready? Uh, we need apps, and I'm going to go on the next one. The BCA, uh, we need to find somebody that we can put on that BCA. Uh, has to live inside the town of Advance. Uh, it's one meeting a month. Sam is on it. It's not the, for the, it's the appeals, but then zoning appeals, and they meet once a month and it pays. Am I bouncing again, pay?
It's fifty-five dollars to me.
Okay.
At, before taxes.
So if you know anybody that we can put on that, it can't be anybody that's on the town board, the park board, anybody that's appointed at any position in the town. It has to be a separate person. So if you know anybody that's retired or not named, they want to go to meeting once a month, might think, do you hear from me, Sam?
Here. Find out what people are building or want to build and things that go build. It's left a bit.
Okay.
Would you like me to put a reach in?
Yes. Uh, we already talked about the grant serve community building stuff and what we're going to do with that. Hopefully we can do them all, but it's going to be a tough road to try to get all the things we'd like to do. Just got to make sure what they say and what we do is not going to impact the rate there anymore. Just have to. There may need some adjustments, but I hope not. New business terms for appointments.
So on, uh, the agendas that you've got on, per House No. 1509, anybody who is appointed by the town, um, such as Sam was appointed to fill, uh, David's, uh, vacancy, um, appointments to the park board, appointments to the APC, all of those have to be on the agenda from now on, for that, for that legislation. My question was, because like a lot, like the park board, they have open-ended terms. Should we have them as yearly terms and have them renewed by the council?
At least we might be renewed every year, but.
Park board and, and, uh, and the BCA appointment.
About the same, but you have to get renewed every year. Have you got someone like?
Who's getting it every year? I was getting it before year. Why, why does it have to be every year?
It's.
Why does it have to be every year? Why can't they?
I was just asking.
Every year, four year.
For all, every four years.
By Indiana statute, Indiana law sets the term for these, just like they set the term for town council members. They set the term probably different.
What, but it, what's the term now? One year?
Four.
Any of these park order?
Well, they're different. I can check, not sure. I can check what you did there on the BCA, APC. Yeah, for the third order said one year, one year. I'll have to look to see. Let me look to see what your order says.
We'd like to see that stretched out as much as possible. So then we have to group stuff every year when these people are, yeah. And good people live alone, none do the job.
You want to make this money, that's what they keep me off.
Okay. Next up, the resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven.
Uh, transfer appropriation to different classifications. So to prepare for budget, I can't have any negative appropriations. So I have to move it in bits between classifications. I have to get council approval. So, uh, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to transfer between classifications to cover negative balances and appropriations that was originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore we resolve out of town council, town of Athens, for county, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following transfer sums of money are hereby appropriated, subject to the clause, government will say. So appropriation, appropriation. One one oh one, oh oh one, one four two, uh, transferred two hundred and four to, uh, one one oh one, oh one, two one seven to the police computer because of getting built the extra computers that review appropriation into a negative.
I'll make a motion to disprove this, are agreeing.
Second.
I'll say aye.
Make a motion, Mayor Coon, resolution twenty twenty-five dash two oh seven.
Second.
I'll say aye. Okay, council through, legal fees for ready green.
What's the ready green?
So that was for Kyle's, uh, work. So, uh, we have an invoice for A and E services for that. However, with all that Kyle's been through, and it'll be a small gesture from the town, probably he's doing this going to improve the town. I was just going to recommend to the town, uh, he does, uh, a little game, so one thousand two hundred ninety dollars.
Anybody have a comment on that? Motion to approve it then.
Motion to approve. I have for the one thousand two hundred ninety dollars.
I'll say aye. Okay. Tiny homes. I talked to the ABC lady because there's been some question about, uh, when to build, uh, houses of six hundred square foot or eight hundred square foot tiny houses in advance. And the, uh, zoning lady or APD lady said that she went right at the documentation course, and that she recommended that a six hundred square foot house not be occupied by more than two people. And her square foot house, like, uh, more than three people. And that she brought that to us for approval. We approved it in the show for the APC. So sometime down the road, we're going to get to take a look at whether we want to do six hundred square foot, eight hundred square foot houses and what that's going to mean. Yeah, and right at the minimum, what, red, twelve hundred square footers.
Right now it's fourteen hundred.
Fourteen square foot. And you need, you know, some of these people probably then, young couples trying to buy a house now. Uh, a six hundred square foot house, just married, they could probably buy that. Uh, an older couple wants to downsize, that would be something good for them. But it depends on what everybody wants. We can, once we do this, we're going to be stuck with it forever, but I think it's a good deal.
When I, when I moved that option over on that Walnut Street, they were going to make me put a twelve by twelve, eight minutes long, which is ludicrous, because it was only twelve hundred square feet. So. Now, the house price now is two hundred dollar per foot. It's going to be interesting. The house on, uh, West Wall was selling on Auction Mar. So we see that, oh, now that was twenty-seven hundred square feet. It's going to be interesting to see what it goes for.
So he said six hundred is two feet, don't it? Eight hundred, what's it?
Yes, that would, that would be the max, which is, I can't say how many.
That little white house, two houses this way of it, is ready for twenty-one hundred dollars a month, with utilities. It is with utilities, but still, twenty-one hundred, so it's getting really unaffordable for young people.
Well, we need diverse housing in the county, but when they did that, obviously, they, uh, we were really lacking a lot of that, so.
Okay. Any questions about that? They're going to bring it to us, and we have to approve it or we're going to disapprove it. Uh, down the road, once you get it written up. Next is conflict interest. Uh, we got a conflict interest form for Bobby Colwell, which is a nephew, bringing to do IT work for the town of Advance. We need to approve for that. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, conflict interest form to Bobby Colwell?
And we're doing this, usually it's like immediate, immediate, not like, like children, spouse, but just to cover bases, like. I make a motion to approve the conflict interest for Jones.
All right. I'll say aye. Any questions, huge? Your quest to speak? Aye.
I make a motion, probably in the votes, it's, I'm saying.
I'll say aye.
At least it wasn't.
Chris, I saw you. I hoped that you wanted to run by. Uh, no, the other night I went by and I, my train was on.
No.
You were riding.
Was it right there?
Uh, I don't, no, I just saw you on a horse.